A few other.
We're good? All right, thank you. I will call for order the City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, the time is two P M. We are located in the Ocean Shore Library. I will go through the roll call and then I will have to do the technical speeds exam. Dan Verger, here, going forward. Happy to be here. Gary Barr.
Here.
Here. All right, so. Herman called me about an hour ago said he had an emergency. He's a person I work after I understand him and couldn't be here. Do we have a motion to excuse Brian? So. You're supposed to be taking notes. Brian, Brian is excused. It was moved by Dan. Seconded by Kerry. All right. Do we have a motion to excuse Mark? He let us all know last week. Moved by Kerry. Seconded by Dan, all in favor. That's all. All right. Next on the agenda is approving the meeting agenda, which is pretty slim. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Paul had to get in there just to make a comment. Second. And all in favor. There was Paul moved. Dan seconded. All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular City of Ocean Shore Planning Commission on May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three? Paul moved again. Seconded by Kerry.
I.
And that's all just fine. All right. At this time, we will take public comments. All right. Vida, do you have any public comments for the? For the general area?
Hi, Gary. No, no comment today. Thank you.
All right. But all right, we have somebody who dialed in last three five-two-nine. Do you have any comments? Nothing heard. Move on. I didn't see that. All right, we have no old business. New business, and this is going to be sort of an ongoing, long-term project for us. Everybody has a copy of the packet if they want it. They are printed for everybody, all out. I understand. We want to kill the trees. And I would highly recommend that we continue to bring this for the meetings, because this is sort of what we'll be working on for a long time. And what we talked about is sort of aligning the land use categories and the zoning, which is a massive effort if we're going to rewrite the zoning code. However, I will tell you that the city council also has it on their long-term work to rewrite the zoning, to read of the zoning and the zoning code. We're sort of starting it off. Go ahead. I'd just like to say, I joined the planning commission in March of two thousand and seventeen, when the complex was just being drafted. So, and we did chapter by chapter, and we could pull off to the back of another chapter and get pulled up. So some of this stuff is really old. So there's no pride in authorship here. So if you see something that doesn't make sense now, yeah, let's fix it. Yeah, in the comprehensive plan, we can update that as needed, or we can update the 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 land use map, as we can update the zoning. And at the end of the day, I think there's a feeling I'm getting from the current city council people, a lot of citizens, that our code is just too complicated. Our zoning code is difficult. There's too much. I mean, Marshall works it every day, so he may be the only person in the world that understands it. I certainly don't. I just trouble everything. Something every time I read it. And so one of the intents here is to simplify the zoning code where we can look at conflicts, but as soon as we start getting into section seventeen, when we get that all done, then we got to look at all the other paragraphs that get affected by reference. And I'm not sure how much protection there is, Marshall, between seventeen and the rest of the code.
Not a significant amount.
Not a significant amount. I think anything we do will pretty much be within seventeen. So what we're really looking at is seventeen. So today is going, we're going to kind of walk through the the comprehensive plan land use categories, and we'll talk briefly about those and then chime in if needed. Then we'll take a quick look at what all the zones are. Then we'll start talking about ways to attack this. So I think it's going to sort of be, we're sort of in our mind, without writing the detail, this is what I look for in my of all of the new or the change zones. Then we start looking geographically before we do the final writing. Because if we start looking geographic, what we're going to find is that perhaps we don't need this zone that was that exists now, like B three, which is more on the map, but existing code, or we've so become overcome by events, we need to sort of merge or figure out a way into a hybrid zone. And I'm thinking of what's going on in the B twos that'll largely become over like rental residential. So all this will stop. So we can create new zones, update the comprehensive plan to the reality of what's happening, convert on the comprehensive plan, and then try to go from there. When we update the comprehensive plan, that's allowed by the comprehensive plan. It can go back to help with changes, right? Every year, every year, we can go back and redo it a year. So we certainly can. But this is going to be a longstanding difficulty. So before we start, my idea is just kind of go quickly through the land use categories and then kind of go through the zones. Any discussion of that? And this should be a pretty quick meeting. This is sort of just to get people thinking about we don't have the familiar area of several lines here. All right, so page five of one fifty-three is the land use categories. Is where it starts. So the commercial land use category, we have the gateway corridor. If you have your map, it doesn't hurt to pull it out. I might have probably left over, although I had to give a couple away. The land use maps. Oh, I have, yeah, we have land use. There's land use here if you want. So if you look at what we call the gateway corridor, it's pretty much what we just voted on not too long ago. I think the only change would be we didn't include I G A and sunset drug areas, is that correct? What we defined the gateway corridor. But we can, we could easily change that. Just sort of as, as we look at the comprehensive plan land use category, like I have a lot of people that are familiar with where they are spatially. So these are the uses. Commercial hotels, hotels, residential, assembly, government, financial, recreation. Also, we listed services professional office. And there's no sense going through all those professional offices are what they are. And then the commercial residential use is commercial developments, retail office, hotels, hotels. Residential mixed use association with real estate office development, restaurants, neighborhood centers. So that's sort of it that we did in the gateway corridor. So we never really delineated B one, B two, when we did the comprehensive plan, and that was with good reason. So if you look at the land use map, it basically took the the pink, which is the gateway corridor, and then added a you look in the interior, like Menard, a commercial residential that a service professional office in that area. We haven't gone that far, and we haven't really stoned that. So when you compare that to what it said for B one, B two, that's kind of what all included in B one, I think I would say, right there. So all of the area that's in that area will be one B two. No real big change. The other that was decide was defined is residential end use or residential low, residential medium, and residential high. The only strict definitional use is density, volumes per acre. Six volumes per acre. Does that align with what we have in R one now? Marshall up here.
In R one?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe so.
I think we're denser than that.
Eight hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Sixty-six hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Typical large seven-two hundred square feet.
Right. And what's an acre?
Forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty.
Seventy-two, so that's how many per six. That's six. So we're just about there.
Yes, it's max.
Back, yeah. So I mean, probably no change to that. Then what interested me as we looked at this really was residential medium and residential high. Those, you can basically see twenty-four units. You can see what it's basically economy construction, I propose it's based for providing space for relatively low intensity multifamily use. And also provide a buffer between single family area and higher density uses, which is the bottom of page six. These should top page seven is to remark, our home prize might primarily have attached multifamily dwelling units up to a maximum of twenty-four units per acre. How the unit should include single family duplex, triplex, fourplex, biflex, or sixplex, which would be high to get twenty-four units per acre, but we'll see. Then residential high is sixty-two units. Single family dwelling duplexes, townhomes, row houses, and multifamily. So one of the things we've sort of talked about a little bit, and we'll go ahead and flip to. Can I, can I go ahead?
There was a, when we started doing this before, there was issue with the new home shelter, whether is this allowed in? And I, I couldn't find it. You know? There's, there's language scattered throughout the zoning code that talks about that, where, where they're allowed.
Yeah.
Or they're required to be allowed.
Yeah, where they're not allowed is R one. I think that's a pro-division and all. We can go there and find it.
Yeah. But I, I, I think when we got talking about it was trying to keep it on medium density. It'd be in high density. And so that's where we, we have to be careful.
Okay. But it's like right in the skin. So it just to sort of kick this off with thoughts, this will be a short meeting. Page nine. You can see right there on the table content for title seventeen. We have R one, R two, R three, R four, R five, R six A, R six B, R sixteen, R seven, R eight, R nine. So we have lots of lots of lots. So my thought is, as most cities go to, and don't remember this, I did a little quick researches. It's very common to see single family, medium, high. That's sort of a more normal designation. So as we sort of drill through the code, and I'm not going to do this today, we sort of look at where is the right place to bin the medium and high, what's the break? In our case, because we have some exceptional areas, the R six B and the R sixteen, those are, which of the R six B is in the general range here, correct? Yes. R sixteen, which I'm not sure why that's still here. If you look at the zoning map, it's basically that area we were just talking about having the weapons issue. And I have an zoning map if somebody needs it. R sixteen is out sort of mid-airport north on the bedside. Up here. And again, I think as we dive through this, we really need to look at the R six A, six B, and sixteen.
Sixteen kind of empiricist, isn't it?
Yeah, because we're building everywhere.
Yeah.
That's my point. We're not restricting double wide.
I think A and B are consistent with the covenants of mine.
Yeah, and I understand what A and B were doing. They were you know, trying to sort of keep it out of that end of town. And that's okay, but I mean, if we want to look at rezoning opportunities, R sixteen is one that we really need to look at.
Roll into part one.
Whatever. That, that was what we could do, just think in R one, seeing as we're building the direction homes in R one everywhere. In R two, then R three, R four, bigger than that. That's something we could sort of talk about.
Does C have any different requirements than R one?
I'd have to look at it and see. I think, and I haven't read these in detail, and I think what we'll kind of do is
It, it could be the difference. I have a sticky note behind me outlining these particular zones, these three zones. And it seems to me like whether it was required to be new or the year that the manufactured home could be as opposed to new.
Okay.
I think that's might be the difference between those two.
Is that possible? And six A is recreational vehicle, when trailer is going well beyond that to reach the definition of six A. So I mean, there's all sorts of opportunities to do that there, but it's going to take some look. Struggling on what we want to do. Point being is, I think what I, this is going to be a really short meeting today, and that's okay. People sort of organizing us, helping everybody here. Is sort of looking at where we think a good break from R one and medium and high is, and then we're going to have this special, what is today, R six A, R six B, maybe that just becomes a single, you know, single wide mobile home, manufacturing home, which is really what's out there, the single wide manufacturing mobile homes. Was, this is double wide out there, actually.
In, in R six B?
Yeah.
Yes. R six A is, is fraught with like park model, smaller than single wide plus modified R V type. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I fully understand that. So, I mean, at the end of the day, what I really think, and this is the discussion we really want to have, is if you look at the zoning map, and you look at the land use map, we have ninety-five percent R one in land area. In both cases, ninety percent. So really looking at preserving the R one, making the barna tweets like we talked about, the six hundred and fifty square foot, but not doing a lot. We don't see a lot of need to I haven't heard a lot of discussion about what we need to do in the R ones to make it better for new citizens of you guys. So maybe simplifying the code, a couple of things, but not that. In the R two, I mean, possibly in the medium or possibly in the high, we could look at allowing subdivision below seven thousand two hundred square feet to do things like, you know, six hundred and fifty square foot homes, subdivide of current has seven lot into four lots, or swallow it. For those sort of the optical room looking for. And spatially, what's very interesting is this great swath of high density. There's always one buyer love, which is the green view, which is in the general land use, and it corresponds to the R sevens and a little bit of R A. So we, I think you guys kind of pulled that across. We were just having this discussion before the meeting about maybe there's more ability to develop that area. Well, that point won't say there obviously. But the backside of green view, and there's other areas where there's potential. The two other things just to think about before we break our short meeting is if you look at the land use map, it's called resort tourist, which is the timeshares and all that sort of stuff down by the jetty. If you look at the the zoning map, I think it's R nine, if I can read the college correctly. Does that sound right? One of the things that would be nice that I've heard from several people is one, let's look at the extent of that. That commercial, that resort, whatever it's going to be called, sort of that, and sort of make that an ability to do a little bit of mixed use, commercial, residential. I'm going to say it and put my hands off, perhaps allow nightly rentals. Because right now, because it's R nine, you cannot legally nightly rent out your condominium down there. So I, we would see if there was a public appetite for in that area of the jetty, which I've always thought with B three, and it isn't, it's R nine. But it really, to me, seems commercial more than it does anything else other than arming and a few other single family homes. Is there an opportunity in there to sort of shape that, sort of a mixed commercial, high-density resort tourist, like it's called here, maybe raise some sort of, and look at the B three zone, its probability. But worried for that. Those sort of the beginning ideas I have. I don't have many beyond that. So if they had any other thoughts on how we would sort of go about this?
No, I, I kind of agree with you on the nightly rental down in that area, because that's what we proposed.
Yeah.
And it died. We took it from Marine View Drive down that whole area. That would be nightly rentals, definitely. And it just died in council.
And one of the things I've heard from several people on council with citizens is is maybe extending whatever we call that zone all the way from Marine View to the jetty. Because if you look what's in there, there's actually a few more new single families going in, but it's not. I mean, you always got to wear the single families versus the high densities, but they chose to build, I guess the ones that are going up right now are currently R one. So that's the issue, is anytime you zone what is currently in R one, something higher density and a different use, where you're going to have the most, well, I think you're making the biggest change. You go further off, just south of Marine View, you've got those four flexes, then the R four four flex area, you know, there's several in there that are condos and all this stuff. I wrote this, and I'll probably write it again tomorrow morning. It's, it's almost a shame from a development standpoint that we didn't look at making this all high density and allow more development of that type of limit. But because we left this little R one pocket, the Marine View down to whatever the, basically eighteen on the zoning map. Do you have any idea why that was left single family to one of your historical?
I have no idea. And it might have been
Just believe oceanfront opportunities, high-end single family homes, probably.
Yeah, it might have been consistently given kind of to look at, see how it may.
When did those condos start going in, and those timeshares and all this?
Division nineteen?
Yeah. Nineteen to nineteen eighty-eight. So those are fairly, well, not really recently.
Four. Eighteen, and then, and then the bulk of the ones on the front, other than what, Park Place or New York or whatever, those were, when I first started, that was what I was doing in ninety-four. So there were, Wiki Banner was there.
There were Seal Point.
Seal Point was there.
Okay.
Your most served.
Yeah, most served. Yeah, sort of the historic, every three or four that were already cited. So sort of looking at that. And so what I, and basically sort of any thoughts, Kerry, on how to attack this piece? I don't know.
It is a big chunk. I, I'm almost thinking, I mean, maybe it's a subcommittee type of situation.
Yeah.
Then we can bring ideas and discuss, but it, it makes it, I think, more than it does, a whole, a whole group for we'll suppose we agree to go out and go look at at least part of it.
Yeah.
And another two or three can go off and look at part of it, make a presentation.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. Paul, any thoughts on the way to fight this piece, or the work, the value in doing it?
Fine. Yeah, same. Digging in small codes and do.
Because I actually think we're, we're going to have to drive down and look and see if it's an area we're not familiar with. And see, how's it really been used? Because I agree with you on seventeen and eighteen. It's so mixed down there. I mean, there are, yeah, some single family houses going out there, but there's, they have to know when they move in there, what they're in for.
Yeah.
It's a lot of tourist traffic down there.
Yeah. And the good news is the backside of seventeen isn't very heavily developed yet, the green grid. It's some single families in there, but not a lot. There's very few spots that are like in town that have lots of undeveloped. They were sort of carving those out for the minimal impact. But again, it's currently, it's going to be much easier for us to sell thinking something that's an R seven now and saying it's high density. Instead of taking something that's an R one now and saying it's medium density. That's a much harder task, I think. And there's, and it may be, you know, as I think about this talk about extending the ability to do nightly rentals all the way to Marine View south, which is a thought, is you create a district and then just say, well, then it is a sub-district, the tie density will live in a sub-district, that's single family, or if it's R and it's already overrun by single family, there's no billable resort lots down there that it's done.
That, that's why I kind of say, I think we have to go look and see really is the content and the makeup of the area, regardless of what the intended use was.
Yeah, because it's been sort of taken over.
There might be less than a dozen empty lots between sports runs away and the jetty.
That's what I think of. There's, I think it's well less than a there's, there's a two, there's one going up right now, and no one ready to go up in there. But, I mean, these are, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, the ones that are out there, so the large.
I mean, for their condos, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there's not much. And then there's, there's not much left along the North Jetty either, that area of nineteen A. And I know it wasn't there, and there's a few left.
Another half.
That had, goes maybe. Maybe, yeah. So I mean, there's, there's thoughts in that area. So again, my intent was just a very short meeting, but sort of come back and start talking about medium, low, and medium, but R one, medium, and high, what that will look like. Please take the time to read through the code, as it's written right now, and look for differences. And then look at simplifications. Then again, the intent would be to leave, to preserve R one as much as we can in a current manner it is, I think is what it says. And that's kind of what makes Ocean Shore though, for ninety percent of people that live here, eighty percent of the people. Look at those everywhere. The land use map says they're higher density. The zoning maps are the higher density, and then look at what we think are good activities in those higher density areas. I think that's sort of, so the task may get simpler than we thought it had, we sort of focused it that way, right? We will see. And again, because this is the result, and if we do it, then if we have to go through the whole area process and all that sort of stuff. But it's not beyond the realm of it's probably time to look at the building of the city and clean it up. Marshall?
No.
You're great.
Yes.
I mean, there are things in here.
I mean, there, there are, you know, I'm you know, just from a planning standpoint, I'm concerned about what's going on in the B one and B two zones as far as our ability to you know, provide the, the heavier industrial type uses that are being chewed up by the by the transient rental.
Yeah, and I mean, I, you know, many times I've thought about where could you create O B two? It's not ready to do really where we're left. You know, we sort of run out of land for B two, and what we have is what we have. What we have is what we have. So if you bought property between Hogan's Corner and Ocean Shores, there may be some opportunities in there just outside for that type of activity, and it may come to that. I didn't know the, I did not know the two I had on the Hogan's Corner issue. That was news to me. That would have been an industrial, a wonderful light industrial farm that could have serviced Ocean Shore from the country. But I mean, and, and the, the whole thing is, is we'd love to get some of those people off of Seahorse running a little, little heavier than light industry on Seahorse Dean and some other folks.
Yeah, well, his intent is to relocate down to the south end, in an area that should have been, you know, more industrial type uses anyway, and you know, he's going to be sitting next to a like a transient rental home.
Because I mean, one of the goals we didn't talk about that, but I agree, we've always said we don't have enough B two, so it's preserving B two where we can. And there's, there's stuff down there, because B two is is, is what's needed, storage units, play out the R, that's what it's not. We'll do that. But the developers are all selling nightly rentals, so. The developers are all selling nightly rentals, so. Again, if we figure out a way in the medium and high density to increase the nightly rental opportunity. In the resort tourist, perhaps that'll take some pressure off on the B two's for that. If there's a.
If, if there's an advantage, that would be it.
If there's an advantage, that would probably be the only if, and looking at it, if we're not, and again, it's, this is gonna happen before November, obviously. Um. So after November, start having a real good solid plan on how do we address this. We're really working up and on now, adding through that, but nothing's gonna happen before November, I think, the last night I saw that. So we're, we're sort of done getting important things done for a little while. Uh. But we really need to look really hard, I think we're gonna have to take an especially hard look at that area. Down there on the south. I guess the southeast end of Point Brown. Uh, it's almost too late, but we'll see. Uh. The, the B twos are still haven't been approached on that much, the B ones definitely, definitely.
And I think, I feel like the B one uses along the canal, both sides of the canal, or, you know, that was kind of the intended use, was some. You know, maybe some retail and stuff like that, light retail, that, um. You know, the transient rentals seem to fit well down there.
Yeah.
They've got them on.
Putting them in the B twos, and maybe it's time to just say no residential, or what's residual B two? Look for spots, but that's not happening with what's going on, I guess, on Olympus and all that sort of stuff, so.
Yeah, we, you know, the phone calls that we fielded in the planning department, the single most popular subject of discussion is whether or not I transient rental.
Of course.
That's a.
No, I agree.
There's an economic engine there that, um, you know, has been talked about over the years, you know, maybe that'll come up again, I don't know.
Well, it fits the overall makeup. Demographically anyway, I mean, sixty percent of our residents don't live there.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, what about that red area there? That's. Right now virtually unusable because of wetlands.
What's that?
One.
Oh.
That, that's that, uh, low high density, or high up is called, I'm saying, behind Greenview, that area you were talking about.
Where, now, each, each of those owners has to piece me and approach it. For wetlands delineation, or these are very expensive things. Would, would there be any? The. Uh, advantage in the city. Doing that en masse. Rather than allowing, having properties do it individually. Or delineate the whole, the whole area. The one-time thing. And maybe make it usable for some use right now, some use in the future.
Well, the, the problem with that is, um, you know, I'm. I'm looking at a limited number of wetland credits that are available to offset impacts to these types of properties or whatever.
Right.
These kind of properties, because they're big, they have opportunities to do onsite mitigation, whereas the single family residential lots that are uncovered by wetlands or wetland buffer. Are really not big enough to do onsite mitigation, so they need a bank. So rather than, you know, I mean. These, these owners individually need to take, um. You know, take a look at what they want to do, I know one of the owners down on the three lots on the south end there, he's, he's proposing, um. Very light use, less than one house per acre, or, or, you know, less than a house per half acre. On, on these lots down here to accommodate, uh, impacts to those wetlands and wetland buffers, just basically go around the wetlands.
There's individual lots along Greenview along here, that.
Yeah, that are in cover.
I, I was thinking about, those are the ones that need the, need the advantage of the bank office.
Right.
But is there any advantage to the city en masse? Delineating all these individual lots along there to see. What has to be done? Because right now, they, they're not gonna be used, and most owners aren't gonna bother. They're just gonna let it go back to the city eventually, because it costs more to do.
Well, I know the, the last three on this one, the owner there is, um, is working on plans to develop those, so, and, and he's working, he's had a delineator out there doing some delineation work.
For single family?
Um, that's his, that's kind of his proposal is, um. Real light density, single family, um, so that he can basically build the houses around the wetlands and not impact the wetlands at all. Can we limon site mitigate that type of thing?
It's possible to, to lean, lean the whole subdivided area, I mean, just individual lots there en masse. Rather than wait for them to happen. Catch, catch, can, over the year.
Well, for the city to delineate private property, I don't know what the ins and outs of that, you know, what the legal.
It's for a cost.
Yeah, I, I don't know. We had those, we've had several single family residential lots where those people paid out of their pocket to delineate their property.
Yes.
And mitigate their impacts, and so for the, for the city to get in and start, you know, helping large landlords, um, seems like. I don't want to be a part of that.
Well, I wouldn't do without some sort of reimbursement, I certainly wouldn't, it's pretty painful thing, but we're looking for a, a, an area that. Has nothing going right now to make it something that we'd like it to be, that's the last spot left in town.
Yeah, unfortunately.
And it's the backside. And I don't know if that's because of the environmental encumbrances that are on those lots. If they were, if there were no wetlands associated with any of these lots, would they already be hacked up and sold, or, or probably, you know, so.
There are also the large parcels under single options, that's.
That's true.
But the individual lots down there are gonna sit there unused for something to come. Unless people want to put together money to fix it themselves.
Yeah, and we have had some, some people doing that along, uh, Fairwood Drive, and, uh, a couple of these other, I've got, uh, January Court, and. Couple of these other courts where I've got individual lots being delineated, and they're putting together mitigation plans. At least every, at least three that I can think about off my head.
Building single family in an R sub. At the end of the day.
Yes, yeah, yes, those cases.
The actual one, unfortunately.
And so again, if the goal, the goal at the end of the day would get, would be to find places to do. Little housing where somebody could, you know, combine three or four lots and then build nine houses type of thing, of spines where we. Sort of about what we talked about.
Yeah.
And, you know, where, that would require a miracle of somebody owning, or being able to wire multiple lots along there and then do. I mean, but i- in my view, where you, where you're doing these. Uh, minimal impact, small homes, you could link a bunch of those in there. And make that sort of how you do a smaller home in the wetland, maybe that's a, a beautiful place to live. You know, and, and, uh, and that's what, very, it's like. And it's, that's, you know, if I'm there all the time, it's just not, it's pretty, it's not, it's not much to be said for that area, but. But not high aesthetic wetland, I think would be the term. Sort of a different feeling, all right, so. I'm really, I don't have a whole lot more on this, it's really just asking you guys to read. Um, again, always flip back, like I do, to the land use categories, in the proper answer plan, and then back to the one we started, we're gonna, we're doing that. Um. Are there any reports other than mine that I have? Okay, my report is. I actually met with. Blue Zones dot org, Gray Harbor, uh. I don't know what his name is, director, C I L, who knows?
Yeah.
So. What's happened is, so to get you caught up with Blue Zones dot org, our Howard Tax Office, um. Some. Western regional, uh, community help five oh one C three. Has found grants to bring to the new zone. And for three years. To do baseline studies for Gray Harbor, Shelton, I think, first in college. They have a full-time employee, they keep coming, and we've got the guy that has, um, Gray Harbor. And, uh, last week, they brought it, they've already done the food survey, they're up in Food Bank, they're looking at the I P A, and it's all of that. Um, last week was the grand tour of, uh, they call it the built infrastructure world. And so I had the opportunity to meet with them, you were doing years. I had the opportunity to meet with them, it was two hours, uh, they were highly excited about, um. Providing a walk-in opportunity to Ocean Shore's. Um, and I know this is subcommittee, and I still have to take one more person on some committee right now, but we're. But we're sort of waiting, because mid-June, they issued their kickoff report. And my feeling was they really wanted to focus some of the biking and walking on Ocean Shore's. On the recommendation of when they put the assets they have, because they saw a lot of opportunities and challenges out here. Um. So the. Three people from the National Blue Zones dot org, two of them have been living in Fortland, so they drove up. Um, through city urban planning architects. Um. Had a lot of interest in good things we had been sort of talking about from biking and walking. So, what, then they had their, like. This young girl, she's been in Michigan in a county for like four years, not five years. And what Blue Zones can bring is the ability to advertise the owner. Which would be good, so we talked about getting citizens involved, and getting folks out there, talk about ideas for biking and walking. Um. So they have a lot of experience on how to do this, so how to bring the community in. Get community volunteers to sort of lead the effort. Blue Zones will provide them for the two years and nine months they got left. The overhead, they'll do some writing, they'll do some researching, they can take. Best practices all around the country for safe biking and cycling, and look at ours and see some right recommendations. And then you work with Sauer, uh, grant writing for some of the stuff. So they've got all of those specialties, I mean, they're basically grant writers, at the end of the day, a lot of them are just grant writers. They can work with our grant writers, or pointer, or helper, or give us, step to grant right in the past with some of this. So we're really sort of on pause until middle to end of June. Uh, they're all gonna come back for a big meeting, and they'll probably come back out for the communities. They did Elma, Aberdeen, Oproy. Here, they left here to go to Pacific Beach and Seawork, the boat cliffs.
So, uh. Maybe Westport also?
Yeah, they're doing Westport, yeah, um, all of that, you know, so they're, they appear to be, and the mayor, they were just because they were talking to me. Um, pretty interested in the opportunities, and what they had talked about is kind of what the mayor had talked to me about. The sort of doing either the twelve or the twenty-four mile around. They really get into connecting, a loop that connects. Downtown with Jetty, with Point Brown, and the school, and the community club. And then the first phase, and they've done this many places, is sort of, um. Working at where are their hazards, where do we need to mark, where do we designate bike route, where do we designate walking, so minimal infrastructure, the first phase. Then in the future, going to the, you know, let's finish Point Brown to the walking trail, let's get the Marine View piece done, let's do that sort of stuff. All that sort of stuff, so that's the first report. The second report, and this is more a question for Marshall, is the, um. Gray Harbor Natural Resorts Council was selling at city council last night.
I listened to that.
Um, there's some opportunities there, I believe. If they are, you know, five percent of what they sell themselves.
It, it sounds like another team of grant writers.
Yeah.
Um, with some, with some engineering, uh, or, or planning. Project management specialists in there.
Okay, the unit's sitting there at the meetings, I can research what all of those conservation, as you power my phone, they're actually a real thing.
Yeah.
They are funded by the state. You know, minimally, and then they skim the grants to keep the rest of their employees. So I think there's, the commission itself is part-time funded. And conservation districts are always seen as agricultural.
Yeah.
Farmers, I remember growing out these records, like, they were real corn, but they're really moving into cities now. Sort of help, um, climate change, or help, or walking, all that sort of stuff. So it was very interesting to hear these guys, so. They have an office at Satso, and then two full-timers would sell, but two of them were full-timers. Satso covered two colleges, and. It's just another opportunity to sort of look at ways to get grant funding in the city, is that how you sort of heard it?
That was exactly what I heard, yeah.
Yeah.
And it seemed like they were fairly well-connected.
Well, yeah, they did.
They, they have some good state resources in it.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, they said they were the ones that got the million dollar grant from Washaway Bay.
Yeah.
Which is dynamite. Um, so they, I just never.
They would help with permitting as well, and, and other types of resources, not just.
So they could be something for you, that say we wanted to do, and you and I still have to have this discussion about the mid-doom. Uh, multi-use firefighting trail. Yeah, that'd be a great one for that, right?
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, you know, that trail we've always talked about, we have the high dome. Which is a finished trail, the mid dome is more of a, you know, combined fire protection, walking, that tire piping. And as far as we can go, basically one goes away, I, I love the term that one of that. Say. What do you think? What would you do? Then you and I would have to find out where we sharpen ourselves on the foot, possibly Doom Protection Act.
Per, permitting would be the challenge there, yeah.
Yes, and if, but if there's a self-inflicted one, like you mentioned to me, in the Doom Protection Act. And Mark, do you remember when the city count, when the community club transferred that area to the city?
Sixty-four, really?
Wow, and that's, I, I've looked at a lot of the court cases, and that's the era that we're talking about.
The era?
The era.
Yeah.
Yeah, about that time.
And so then we need to figure out what is in our Doom Protection Act. Oh, that. Code. That prevents this sort of thing from happening.
Yeah.
And then can it be changed? That's the only question, is do we have code that prevents this thing? For, for many different reasons, and I just think it's a great resource, because I see more and more and more people walking the ad hoc trail every day, right? There's a lot of people walking the ad hoc trail now, it's pretty much from Marine View. To Taurus is where I see a lot of activity walking all the way, of that whole length of it, and the mid doom trail.
Yeah.
Used to be the. The high doom trail is a high doom trail, you know, we'll let that go. The mid doom trail, you see a lot more people on what I call the near trail. Which is more easily a tree. But that's. Got a lot of what was coming into it now.
Yeah.
So the mid doom trail is basically just west of the last, the vegetative line.
Yeah.
And it's getting a lot of use, like, now people walking in, which is great.
It gets a lot of use from Taurus to, to, is that like the next one?
Oh, they, well, that may not be, they did use them. It'd just be hard to access it there, and, and stay, you got to push up that burn to keep people off of it. That's all, all right, anything else? Oh, I think Brian is next. I will confirm and send that to Brian, or ten dollars, he's the next open paper. Because then we go back, you don't need that? I, I, we've got, we got that, all right. So next meeting is June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at two P M. Do we have a motion to be adjourned? Like, Barry, second it, and, and all in favor? All right, thank you.